All right. Good evening, this is the December 23rd, 2014 Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. And we'll start with the pledge, and we have a nine-year-old having her birthday today, so Natalie and Bruce, if you can help me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so good evening, any announcements from the public? Tonight is the last meeting of the month, so we have some business to conduct. This is also mine, and Gina's last meeting for whatever.
I have a couple of announcements. One of them is the ice skating rink is almost ready to run, so January, February, pray for cold weather, and you'll be able to ice skate again this year. The other thing is, as this is Tom's last official meeting, I have to read something. When Tom took over as supervisor in 2008, the new board assumed responsibility for the comprehensive plan, revised zoning regulations, and freshwater-wetland law, as well as many other open matters. I'm getting nervous here. I don't know why.
He's getting emotional.
Yeah. These matters included active lawsuits, an EPA judgment, accounting problems, dormant grants, DEC violations, border health issues, and relics in the park. Then the recession hit, along with the breakdown of the state retirement system and the tax cap. Tom facilitated several new ways of getting things done in Rhinebeck, and leveraged his influence with the county and state for the betterment of Rhinebeck. During Tom's three terms in office, the boards were able to handle all of these issues, improve local government efficiency, and expand multi-generational services while keeping taxes down. It's been an honor to serve with Tom for the past six years, and we thank him for his many contributions to Rhinebeck. We have a present for you. We have the seal of Right Hook for you.
Oh, nice.
Thanks for all you did, Tom. Appreciate it.
You colored between the lines, too, I see. Appreciate that. Thank you very much for this.
Well, it was the whole board. And the town.
From the town.
Town.
Members of the community. Thank you very much. Well, appreciate it. It's been a pleasure serving with all of you. It's been a uniformed by governor over the past six years. You know, many towns go through difficult times with their governments, you know, polarizing matters, but I think we've done a good job sticking together, and even though we've had our differences, we've certainly overcome many obstacles, so certainly appreciate everybody's, you know, working together here on this town board, also God, Corinne, and Ellen Silverstein, and Dan Staley. And that was it, right? Those are the only ones that I can remember.
It's been so long.
It's been so long, yeah.
I remember Dan.
But also, of course, my kids have grown, you know, they've grown up so much since then, and my family's been by my side, so without them, I wouldn't have been here to do all this. So, want to appreciate, express my appreciation for all the volunteers. There's been a lot of sacrifice out there. I know you've been with us to accomplish many obstacles, to make improvements in our community, and help people live independent lifestyles, to survive these difficult, unnatural times in our work, in our community, so I thank all the volunteers who, if I start naming them all, I forget some of them, so I'm not going to even start, but thank you all for all that we've accomplished together. And with that, Gina, thank you for coming on.
You're welcome. I just want to say...
I have been in a...
Oh, geez. No, just wrap it up.
No, I speak very slowly, Gina, and we gotta let you... I first met Gina four years ago when she and I were nominated to run. All I knew about Gina was that she had won a prize for best rhubarb pie at the fair. In the four years that I've served with Gina, I've learned that her skills are much broader than rhubarb pie. Chicken pie is extraordinary, mushroom soup, excellent, and stews. Seriously, one of the high points of my tenure on board is getting to know Gina. She's generous, caring, a mother, a chauffeur, a cook, a companion to the elderly, and a town board member, and it's really a very full plate that you carry. Gina has become a chief bargainer on behalf of the taxpayers of Rhinebeck. She was active in getting our AUD costs prepared at a substantial savings. She was active in shopping for term fees, and she has been active in possibly outsourcing payroll. She's been an advocate for the natural burial at the cemetery. Although I know Gina and I will always keep our friendship, it will be very difficult sitting next to another person at the town board meetings. Gina has a tendency to drink food at the town board meetings, so I think this change might be good for my waist, but I would really miss Gina. So we do have something for you, Gina, and at your request, you did not want a plaque, but...
Beautiful.
Something else, so...
Beautiful. You can sit right here.
Okay.
Gorgeous.
So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
On the board.
It's been a great pleasure to serve for the last four years, and it was way more work than I had anticipated, but it's changed the way I move through the streets and sidewalks of our town. And I can't cross a bridge without thinking, oh, yeah, that was $477,000, and that culvert was $37,000, and that person's in violation. I wonder if he's fixed it yet. It's just, the ordinary person has no idea the things that we deal with on the town board, and I do now know that, and I feel really comfortable that it's going to be left in very good hands, and I look forward to continue serving the town and the village of Rhinebeck, both at the cemetery committee and helping out with the zoning board. So, I'm not gone for good, but everyone have a great Christmas and a good New Year.
Moving on, any further announcements?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Village of Rhinebeck, Tommy and Gina, thank you both. You know, I think when you enter into public office, as Gina said, you really don't realize how much work it actually is, and it is a tremendous amount of work, and, you know, no matter how much people may think you do the job, you know, to be recognized for glory or whatever, that's not why you do it. You do it because you like to be involved, you do it because you want to get things done, and you do it because you love your community and love the people in your community. So on behalf of myself, the members of the village board, thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, Captain. Consala Town Highway Superintendent, and I just couldn't let this go by without giving my thanks to both of you as well for your service. Gina, you've not only added a sense of style to the board, but of spirit. You're always talking about the sports teams and the school, and you keep it all connected as a sense of community, and that's just been great in terms of bringing that forward. Tom, I told this to you privately, but I do want to say it publicly, I find you to be such a graceful and a gracious person, and I thank you for that presence very much, and it will really be missed, so thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right, I hate to say it more, any other announcements?
Well, I just can't let this moment go by either. I'd like to congratulate my little brother on his retirement from the town board, and also you, Gina. And, Tom, you didn't really get me involved with the village board, but you did make me think about serving the public. And Gina, I just want to make sure you water that tree that we planted. Okay, good.
I think if you had time to, you'll be proud of it.
All right, so...
Hello, little people!
We're proud of you. It's all we've known, all the girls have known pretty much their whole life, Daddy being town supervisor, and we're very proud of you, and they're very silly, but we love you, and we'll let Jillian and Natalie do the talking.
I really, we're really proud of our dad for being town supervisor for six years, and we really don't want to stop being town supervisor, and... Merry Christmas!
Thank you, guys.
Tom, I'd just like to say that I really enjoyed getting to know you and serving with you, and what you've taught me or shown, you know, is a deep respect and knowledge and love for the people in this community, and it's admirable and very touching, and I want to say thank you.
And Gina, you will be missed, and I hope both of you will continue to stay involved.
You've been both great advocates for the town, and I've learned a lot with both of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom, if I may say, on behalf of the board, I wish your daughter a happy birthday, and thank you for coming tonight.
Where's the cake?
All right, so, moving on, all right, any announcements, any real announcements here? All right, so, moving on to business, everybody. So, motion, second to approve, December 9th, town board meeting minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Ballot, paper, aye.
Aye.
Item E is a village fire contract workshop, and so we have some sort of agreement to have the workshop, working workshop, future with the mayor and the village. Come on up, you.
So, Heath Fortarella, trustee of the village, has served liaison for the fire department. As I've said many times, thank you, Tom, thank you, Gina, good luck to Elizabeth and Elena in their new roles, and the council person to meet them later. Good luck as well. We'll remain seated where you are. Here to talk about the fire contract, as you may or may not know, we are working towards an agreement to continue coverage to the town's fire protection district. What we do have is a four-year period of data that's available. Bruce took a look at it to start, and just a little background on what, how that, where that data comes from. So, they have a little printer over in the fire department, it's called Rip and Run. It comes from Dutchess County, call comes out, gives a piece of paper, maybe another apparatus is sent to the fire, another piece of paper comes out, they're returned to duty, made available for another call, another piece of paper, call's completed, another piece of paper. They get stapled together for that one call, and goes in a box, and Bruce has seen there's two boxes about this big for the last four years. And just how we get to the data that we gave to you guys in the past, I think, a couple of occasions, the fire department, I don't believe, is required to compile any data from that. They do compile data for their own purposes, and after that, they extract data from that raw material based on what we asked them for. And up until 2010, all they asked for was the total number of calls, and since then, we've asked for more and more, which gave us the town-to-village breakdown, and also the fire EMS and motor vehicle accident breakout of those calls. And that's the report that we provide every month at the village board meeting, and that's the data we use to give to you guys to support the increase that we requested for the contract for 2014. There's been some talk about looking back and dissecting those four years, and we have no problem that the data remains available to you. You know, one suggestion I had is maybe we can work forward. You know, we're working on a temporary agreement now to bridge the gap, but in terms of building a more long-term contract, maybe look forward. You know, I've mentioned in the past that the fire department will, we can extract whatever data they want moving forward, it'd be a lot more manageable, and probably make more sense in trying to put that, put that four years and pick that apart. So that's something we could work together with in the future. I will note that, as of November 1st of this year, we did, I requested that they give us a breakdown of all the mutual aid calls, they're breaking that down to include one category for Hillside, one for Rhine Cliff, and one for all others, and we reported that at our board meeting for the first time on the November numbers. So, that should be a valuable piece that we'll be there moving forward to look at. In terms of the agreement that was sent over from Mr. Apansky, we discussed that tonight, and, you know, we're prepared to enter the agreement with the exception of the amount, you know, we want the amount to be 1365th of the requested 187,953, and we'd like to see a 60-day time on it placed on that.
Sorry, would you read that?
Can I just repeat the amount that you...
187,953.
No.
The agreement that came over was 1365th, so a daily rate...
Oh, I get it. 36...
Yeah, and it was based on 156. The change that we requested was to make it 187,953 to match the number that we requested, and there is language in that agreement that would make it reconciled retroactively once the final agreement is reached.
So that would be part of the agreement, that wherever we come out, there'll be a retroactive adjustment if that's where we go?
Yeah, that's the language that was exchanged between the town and village term.
Do you have that language, Warren, or you don't have it?
I have a copy.
I don't remember the reconciliation provision. Of course, our numbers had, were based on 156, but we would want a, if it's going to be based on the higher number, we would want a reconciliation back to the number that we agree on, so we can add that language, but I don't remember seeing it. This was, this is added actually by your attorney to, you didn't have this, I did an original draft, and then he added this, but that's fine, as long as we have that language. You know, it's up to the board, but as long as we have the language in there that will reconcile it back to whatever number we finally agree on, either.
Yeah, I don't know who added that piece in, but that's the draft that I saw have that.
Not any draft that we have.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a draft, and I don't see it.
But it was just shocking that we got such an increase this year, where it first came to us in the Rhinebeck workshop. It was way higher than any of the projects that I've worked on, and it just seemed unreasonable. So that's why the questions were raised about what we should be covering. Should we be covering equipment? Should we be covering administrative costs? You know, there apparently are guidelines from the state that maybe we should not be, so we couldn't, in good faith, just go ahead and at the threat of sign it or we walk, which is what the mayor presented to us, we could not...
That's not what the mayor ever said. He said it, we should do it.
Could you not interrupt, please?
So, so... When we were presented that, you know, it's too late, and you have to sign it, as it is, as presented...
I know I personally presented it to the board on three different occasions, and no action was taken at any of those moments in time. You know, we did discuss the reasons for the increase at each one of those, at each one of those times.
When was you first presented to us?
October 21st.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, because for what it's worth, I'm looking at Town Law 184, which talks about, and it's not directly on point, but I think it's somewhat analogous, for a contract that has an indefinite duration, and Section 4 clearly says that if there's...
The contract is a one-year term.
I understand, I'm saying it's not...
Well, you just said indefinite, that's why I...
Could I finish up, please?
Sure, it's one year.
Refund?
Sure.
As I said, it's not directly analogous, but what it says is that changes should be made by the 20th day of August, and the theory, I believe, is to give people a sufficient amount of time. As you know, we were way into our budget cycle at the end of October, so that we didn't really have a lot of time to react to it. Budget was pretty much set when we did, and I think that's what caused a lot of angst on both the village's part and on our part, but it came very late in the process.
Can I, first of all, thank you all for coming, and, you know, I've spoken at length to the mayor, and to Heath, and to Heinz. I think this is something that, you know, we can work out and need to work out, but we have concerns as well. It did come very late in our budget process. It was a, was it a 25% or 26% raise? A $44,000 raise that we would be passing on to our fire protection district. We, I know that Bruce and you worked several weeks after the 21st, looking at data, going back and forth, and I believe that Bruce did a spot audit of one month, November of 2012, where there were 68 calls, is that correct, Bruce, about 68?
Yeah, I think that's what it was, yeah.
Out of that, we found about a 10% margin of error. We were charged for six or seven mutual aid calls, one of which, or additional to those six or seven, was sending the fire department to Long Island for Hurricane Sandy. So, you know, we realized that there could be a margin of error in how this was looked at, so we'd like a chance to audit it. And secondly, I'm not sure, how did you base your charges, how did you charge us before? What was the methodology for charging us before? Do we know? I mean, what you're proposing here, just so the public is aware, is we had one type of charge being levied by the village's fire protection, fire department to our fire protection district, and it was proposed that it go to a per-call basis, but what was it...
It has not been proposed to go to a per-call basis. We just used the number of calls to divide the cost. It's not, it would still be, the way it was proposed, the number 187, if there were 1,000 calls to the town, it would be $187,953 for the upcoming...
But you did, but you did use the call, the call volume, so it is based on call volume, because you used that as a guide to reapportion...
But we also asked if you had any suggestions, and how you think it should be calculated, and we don't really see any other way to do it.
Parcel population, or...
There's been talk about parcels, there's been talk about population, but the bottom line is, when the truck leaves the station, that's what costs money. It doesn't cost money to protect the vacant lot that the truck never goes to.
Well, most of our firefighters are volunteers, so they're not, it's gas that we're paying for. Really, you're taking the whole amount of what the village spends on their fire department, and you are dividing it by the number of calls, and then charging the fire protection district based on that apportionment. Is that correct?
The calls that go to the district.
Right. And included in that cost is all of the capital replacement, or the capital purchases that the fire department makes.
The volunteer firefighters would have a hard time responding to a fire in the fire protection district without the truck that we must pay for, and other equipment. So yes, the cost of the equipment, whether they're financed, purchased outright, that all gets rolled into the cost of operating the fire department, responding to calls within the village or outside of the village into the town.
There is apparently some sort of issue with us paying for equipment that we, as a town, do not own, and that's something that I think we have to address as well. This whole contract brought up a bunch of things that I don't think many of us were aware of. I know I wasn't.
I think that would be the nature of a contract, though, that you're not purchasing them, so that, the village is purchasing them, and you're contracting to use it.
Right, and now wait...
And that's inherent to the contract situation.
But we have been charged in the past separately for capital. We have a $7,500 fee for...
Yeah, you guys split it out, line items, I can't answer why you do that, but we don't.
No, I don't think we, I don't think we split it out, I think you split it out to us.
I don't know, you know, this is probably something that you guys need to do in the workshop, because even though the other fire departments purchased their equipment with a, with the capital balance for it, they still probably use our funding to build up that balance, so even though it's on the back end there, it's on the front end here.
But we do have a contract that breaks this out, and we do have, our old contracts did break this out. There was a $9,000 charge for a fire truck and a $7,500 for ambulance, so that's, you know, what is that, 16, five right there, within this number that I, I think, Warren, can you speak to this? Is that...
Well, I mean, you paid, I reviewed the contract, since 2008, you paid $54,000 towards a new fire truck, which is not owned by the town, and if that gets traded in, it gets, it doesn't inure to the town's benefit, and we wouldn't be able to purchase that outright. That's clearly not, not permitted. The question is whether putting it into the budget and not revealing it in the budget, putting it as a total amount, even though we know we're paying for the capital improvements and the ambulance, which we paid $22,000, is, you know, meets state controllers muster, which is something we have to talk about. But it's, it really should be disclosed when the contract is sent to us, how you've broken down the contract into administrative cost and capital cost, and that's something we'd like to talk to you about.
Just out of curiosity, do the other contracts, are they all split up that way, between Hillside and Rhine Cliff? And have there been a similar examination, or do they just give, you know...
Nobody's come to us for a 25% hike, you know, two weeks before our budget was due.
It wasn't two weeks, but regardless, I mean...
Well, two and a half weeks.
So, whatever money you give to them, you don't, you don't analyze it, you just give it to them, and then with us, because it's more, you analyze it. Is that, is that what I heard?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate, Heath, but I also don't want you to see any, and I don't think there's anyone in this room that's an adversary to the fire department. I even served on it when I first moved to Rhinebeck, until I had four children, and it was too much, but I think you guys are spectacular. I think everyone would agree with that. Now, though, that I know how the town works, we actually have a vendor-vendee relationship with the fire department. And so we have to look at it as a vendor.
Someone comes to us for a 25% hike, two and a half weeks before our budgets do, we, it's our responsibility, we, it's our fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers and the people in the fire protection district to make sure that we're getting the best deal for the best services, so, you know, and, and we have said, you know, that $44,000, we have to be able to work this out, because we're all here for the benefit of Rhinebeck residents.
And safety.
How did you, how did you decide in previous years what our charge would be?
That's what I asked.
I can tell you, I've been on the board since, just this year, it was my first year, and, you know, I always hold the data that I had, and I talked to Elizabeth about this, and I didn't approach it as a real estate deal or a car deal... And I didn't approach it as a real estate deal or a car deal. There wasn't a 20 percent built in, say, well, we really want 30, so let's ask for 40. It was, we did straight numbers.
With all due respect, I'm not asking about how you came up with this year's time.
I don't know.
In the past.
We don't know, we don't have any clue as to, I believe, as to how it was figured in the past, this is obviously a change.
Do you know, do you know how it's been figured for Hillside or Reinkliff?
Nope.
Because maybe we, if they have it all right, maybe we could follow the model there. You know, if the town's done all the analysis and it's all straight.
I don't think there's any...
Joe, hold on, hold on.
I don't think there's anything wrong with what you're proposing. We just need to verify it. That's all. You know, the, the protection district that you cover has paid for 75 percent of the operating cost, just the, the equipment, capital, and contractual expense from 99 to 2012, according to the state data. And that, that balances out nicely with the other fire companies that we deal with. Okay? They give us their...
This is the first I'm hearing of this.
No, no, I, and, you know, I'm learning about this, too.
We're all becoming experts in fire.
So, so, you know, so, but then when you look at the capital part of it, then it goes down to 48 percent. So, so, that's a big swinger. But, but the day-to-day operations, the districts, you know, funding a lot, and you count on that revenue in your budget.
Our revenue, you mean, our...
From us, from us, yeah. And the other, the other fire companies, as far as we can tell, they give us their budget every year. They have, they have different worksheets. Each one does it a little differently. But we can see what they're doing from taxes, what they're doing in, in revenue from us, and what they're doing from fundraising and interest and, and that kind of stuff. And, and we see how they're going to spend the money. They, they put money away, usually a certain amount to buy equipment, right? And you do that sometimes, too. And, and so, it's something we need to sit down. We probably get, need to get the commissioners in, into the discussion at some point so we really get a good understanding of it. But I think 60 days, we can work it all out.
Sure. I mean, for the village, we are the commissioner, the village board.
Okay. But, but with the other, with the other companies...
And that's the big difference with the others. They're, you know, a contained entity of, they have their own board commissioners, and they don't have, you know, all the other departments to operate. Whereas the village, the fire department is, is a department of the village, so it gets funded out of the general fund. So, it's not as clean as you would see in Hillside or Reinkliff, and that's not by our choice. That's just the way it is.
So, we can get a copy of these call sheets so we can determine...
Yes, there are, the sheets are available.
And you say that you have time in, time out also on the, come through on a printer?
I believe that's on there as well, yeah.
And am I correct in believing that mutual aid is determined by the 911 operator as to who gets called if there's mutual aid?
I believe that's correct. That's just counting 911, the EMS organization, that there's an agreement, and they determine where the nearest piece of equipment is. So, it's not that, it's not that Reinkliff or Reinbeck would always be the mutual aid for, it's on a case-by-case situation. So, you know, if Reinbeck's equipment is out east somewhere and there's something in Reinkliff, maybe Red Hook would go, or Hillside would be.
Or if it's on the border of Reinbeck, they may call Red Hook or...
Correct. It's a, it's a case-by-case. It's not a one-to-one. So, that's why you would see mutual aid that could go anywhere in the county or even outside, you know, the county in cases of disaster or emergency. Now, I would just like to know on some of the discussions we compare to the other departments, the Reinbeck, the village fire department responds to more calls in the, in the town protection district than Reinkliff and Hillside respond to in total, not just within the district, but within their own district. So, you're not really comparing apples to apples when you're talking administrative costs, equipment costs. It's a much bigger operation.
I have one question. Go ahead.
That's why we should all get together and see if we're doing this the right way.
You know, not only specifically with the village, but fire protection for Reinbeck is, do we have it structured properly? Are we working as smartly as we can? Is there one area in Reinbeck that is needier than any other? Why, what's pulling it? What's, what's happening?
I can't speak to the exact numbers of where they go, but when you have places like, you know, the nursing homes and such, they're going to get a higher call volume than, you know, an average healthy resident.
Now, most of these places are tax exempt. Are they doing any pilot or, you know, in lieu of taxation paying towards fire protection? I, I don't know off the top of my head. Does anybody?
I don't believe so, and I don't know that that is, that's legal to ask them. I mean, maybe that'd be a question for an attorney.
It's, we could approach them, yes. So, maybe that's something we have to look at, too, approaching if, say, one non-for-profit is getting, you know, 30 percent of our call volume, we could bring it to their attention. I'm just saying that we could approach them as a board and say, this is what's happening. Could you, will you contribute? Well, we realize you don't legally have to. People do. Bard College certainly pays for its fire protection.
You're going to miss me when it comes time to go ask that question.
You can approach one.
Yes, we can, you can always ask. If you ask, you...
I'm happy to do it.
She'd come back for a special...
So, let's follow up. You guys can follow up.
Well, I have a concern. Sure. And I'm concerned with the memorandum because I thought I had worked that out with your attorney. So, now you're telling us that if we don't sign the, I just want to know, if we don't sign the agreement, which I have to see from your attorney, and I'm assuming he'll get, he'll get that to me tomorrow, for the full 187,000 that you are prepared to terminate fire protection to the residents of the town of Reinbeck who will not respond to calls for residents of the town of Reinbeck who live in the fire protection district?
What we approved as a board is to enter into the agreement at the 187, at the 1365th of the 187,953. That was the only adjustment to the contract or the agreement in the format, in the draft that, that we saw tonight that was worked out between you and Rich.
But if the town refuses to sign the increase, you're going to terminate the, the fire protection as of January 1st to the residents of Reinbeck?
We approved them to sign it for, we approved to move forward to 187,953.
At your rate?
Yeah.
If we wanted to stick with the old rate until we audited, would you terminate our fire protection?
I mean, I can't answer that question as an individual. I can tell you what we, what we did approve to do tonight.
It's still, although it's presented in a much nicer way, it's still sign this or sign it at the level we want or...
Alternatively, you're approaching us and saying, sign it at our rate.
With the increase that we gave you, with the increase that we did give you as well. It's not like we didn't give any increase. We tried to fit what we could afford into the budget.
And it would be an adjustment either way if we...
Right.
Yeah, there would be an adjustment, so...
I mean, your, your budget's static until, when does your new budget take effect? Did June 1st or...
June 1st.
June 1st. So, you're funded...
But you guys are still in the process of March, though, right?
Yeah.
But you're funded through June 1st at our old rate. We're...
Well, we're funded through December 31st for this contract.
Oh, okay, this contract.
Yeah.
Right, of course.
How soon can we get copies of the call sheets?
There's, there's two boxes of them. I'm making sure it makes sense to make copies. We could sit there and go through them.
Yeah, I don't think it's...
But I gather you wanted to bring them over here and...
Well, we could do it, I, you gotta sit there and look at them and compare them to the tax rolls. That's how you audit them, so...
Can we bring them over here across the street?
Or can I have a desk over there with a plug?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. What?
I guess we would like, we would like them here, and we'll set up a desk maybe in the assessor's office so that we can consult tax records, parcels.
Okay. And either way, you know, I still think it would be good moving forward. And if from that audit, if you generated some more, you know, data that you wanted to see on a monthly basis, other than what we're already collecting, we can add that in and, you know, make it a more bulletproof data set so we're not here again next Christmas.
I guess we would...
Is your preliminary thinking that going forward, you would use this call volume as the lodestar to be carrying price?
I would say yes. I don't know that there's another way to configure that. And, you know, I would add, in that, just by the distance involved, it's going to cost less, it's going to be less time, less fuel, less wear and tear on the equipment to go to, you know, a fire on Livingston Street than it is going to be to go out on the edge of the town. So, if you're splitting it strictly on call volume, the town is still getting the volume compared to the, to the village. But I don't know that there exists a mechanism to split that out, you know, per mile, you know, on a vehicle or per mile on the response. And, you know, they're, they're volunteers, so the timeframe, you know, it takes, you know, twice as long to get there, twice as long to get back.
But what if you just go out on a call and come right back as opposed to go out on a call and stay there all night fighting a fire? Is that the same charge?
Yeah, that's, it's not really a charge. It's just what we're using.
But, I mean, I'm just pointing out an obvious inequity. We could recharge the same amount for the fire department going from here out to Frost Road and coming right back, or going out to Frost Road and spending 10 hours fighting a fire. It's, the apportionment seems off.
Well, if you look at it across, you know, the average, if you want to average the calls across all of them, the average call in the village is going to be cheaper than the average call to the town just based on the distance.
Where are most of your fires? Do we have to look at stuff like that, too? Like where, where are your, what are the call time durations?
Yeah, we have to look at the types.
There are lots of different variants with just a call.
I, I look at this a little bit differently than most of the board, except, because I'm a village resident.
Right.
Because, because I look at if we're funding, if the district is funding 75 percent historically...
75 percent of...
The operating costs, historically, the contractual and...
Fire protection district funds the village fire department 75 percent of the operating costs.
Right. So, so if that happens and we go to this call basis and we, we pick the wrong criteria, then my taxes as a village resident may be going up. And so, so I'm just telling you, we, it's very important that we agree, the two boards agree on whatever the criteria is going to be. And I don't think we know what that is yet.
We don't even know what the data is.
It may have been looked at that in the past, but, you know, that operation budget that you're talking 75 percent of, that doesn't include fuel oil for the building, that doesn't include maintaining the firehouse.
It's, it's, it's whatever the village reports to the state as contractual expense or equipment, you know, that kind of stuff, and personal services if any. And so, it's those three, two, three lines in the A Fund and the H Fund. And that's, you know, it, it's how you, how you report that. That's the data that I'm looking at.
So, do you guys know who's going to sit down on these discussions? I, I won't be on the board anymore, but...
You're welcome.
I think our board is off there.
I mean, I think, I think we're proposing that maybe we have a joint committee. And Bruce and Joe expressed a willingness to continue.
Okay.
And we should know who, you know, obviously, you're the liaison and the commissioner or, you know, this is positive. We have a plan moving forward. We'll look at it. We need to involve the commissioners from the other fire departments and see if everything's in balance.
Okay. And it's, yeah, I mean, if you're going to look at the whole town as a whole, then...
I think that's what we have to do together.
You guys would have to call in the other, you know, the other two districts and the commissioners.
You have to figure out who's working with Bruce and Joe on this day-to-day, this joint committee.
Yeah, I mean, I will, we're with them, and we will round out the committee. I'm sure we'll have a couple eager volunteers to work on that.
If we're going to be paying you for the, on the interim basis, for the full contract price that you're demanding, is there any reason to keep this termination clause so tight? Because I foresee us needing more time to work this out.
You mean the 30 days?
60 days.
If we're going to pay you...
30 days.
Essentially, what you've demanded on an interim basis.
Why you need a determination clause?
Yeah, we're agreeing to the rate.
Well, if I was them, I would just keep, I'm not having it.
Yes.
But, but it's, it's really tight. You know, I'd feel more comfortable with a 60-day or a 90-day, as long as...
Why you need any day, Warren? If we're going to pay on a higher rate...
Well, who gets to quit? Do both of us get to quit the contract?
We may want a determination. We may find that there are alternative ways of...
Okay, you're right.
...find.
That's another question, Gina. I just am trying to figure out all of this, but say in the worst-case scenario, and we found that we could not go along with this, and we found something else to do, could the village pay for the fire department to continue?
What do you mean, Gina? I don't understand.
Well, like if, like in, I think in Fishkill, like what if, what if we didn't go with the village fire department? I don't think anyone wants to do that, but what, what happened if, if that happened?
I mean, very much theoretical because I don't think, or hypothetical, I don't know that any of us know the answer to that, but, you know, the costs and the operation would be greatly reduced because they'd only be responding to the village. So, you know, over time, it would...
And then the village would have to pay for the entire operating costs.
You're saying you could shrink the department, have it cost less, and the village residents would absorb it all?
Well, hypothetically, I mean, what, what, hypothetically, what, what is the alternative to that? To the, you know, to someone else? I mean, I don't know that, you know, first, you guys would have to find alternative coverage first, and...
Is it something worth looking at, you know, inter municipally with, with other towns near us, you know, with this joint committee? How do we, you know, who's near us? Red Hook's near us, Clinton's near us, Mylan's near us, Hyde Park. I mean, do we look at a bigger network beyond just us? I mean, are these, are our fire departments vibrant enough to take care of all of us? Do we spread it out? Is that too big for us to look at? Is it, is it not?
I mean, it seems that in the...
It's difficult, and you also have to, there had, there was a mileage requirement.
And a response time.
I think five or six miles.
And that's how the three current departments are, are set up to meet those, meet those demands.
So, they're not just placed there by mistake? It was...
I don't think so. I mean, they're all independently created, but not by mistake, I don't believe. I wasn't, certainly wasn't around them.
Can we consider, so this doesn't happen again, there's a provision, I think it's under 185 of the town law, that provides in such contracts that if they are going to be essentially terminated by, when I say terminated, that would be, that you're not going to renew this contract under the same terms, that we be advised by August of the, of the next year so we have enough time to, to prepare for that. We can put that into the contract.
Yeah, that sounds like, maybe it would be appropriate for the, the end state when we work out that, that agreement, you know, after this temporary one. And I don't see why that language couldn't be in there, but, you know, that's more of an attorney-to-attorney kind of thing.
Should it go in the same one?
No, I just, I just don't know whether we could, I, I need to get some authorization. We're under a tight timeframe here. Obviously, I need to see the contract from, that you've agreed to tonight. Rich Olson could get that to me. But I'm going to need some authorization from the town board unless we want to have another special meeting before the end of the year to authorize the supervisor to sign that contract. We could sign it with the flexibility that could be signed up to the 187,000.
When is the new contract signed, in, in January or now?
We would, we have to have a public hearing. We can't sign, you have to, even if we came to terms tomorrow, we have to have a public hearing on the contract, on the final contract. So, it's not going to be signed until January, no matter what.
The final contract, not the temporary agreement.
That's correct. The temporary agreement, no, we can, we can, we can do it now, but I don't have an agreement in final form for you to vote on unless you pass an open-ended resolution allowing the agreement to be signed up to the 187,000.
Well, what do we expect in that interim agreement? Well, what do we expect in that interim agreement? We expect that it will be the higher rate, that you said we wanted a longer period than sixty days, and still we reach a conclusion. And there's an out after, and I think sixty day, you know, what's it, thirty days notice?
I, I would be much more comfortable with sixty days, as long as we're paying the higher rate. And we want an account, there has to be an accounting at the end, so if we come to terms on a, a lower contractual amount, there has to be an accounting for the overpayment.
But I think they said they agreed to that concept, the cabinet in one way or the...
It's not the current...
It's not in the lawyers that, in the draft you have. I mean, I thought that took place between you and Rich before.
Yeah. You could just tell Rich to get that to me like tomorrow, possibly. And that if you want to propose a resolution, really giving the open-ended authority to the supervisor would be advice of council to sign that agreement, that would, we don't have to come back and have a special...
I think that's fine. I'm fine with that.
I make a motion.
I second it, Kathy.
Oliver, I'm...
Hi. And this is, essentially, large lines we're talking about.
Exactly, those are the major priorities. I'll send it all to you.
All right, I want to thank you again for coming, all of you.
Yes, look forward to working, working on the file.
Going through the data.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
We have no presentations today.
Governor, Mayor of the Village, Brian Beck. Contrary to what Gina had said before, I never said that the Village of Rhinebeck would not provide fire service to the, the town of Rhinebeck. What I said is we had no intention of continuing the agreement that was going to cost our taxpayers dollars. Okay, so with that said, we had asked you folks, what information do you need from us? We did that back in October. And you approved your budget with no consideration for asking us for any information, so that you could sit down and have an intelligent discussion. So that's where my point is being, as in, all along, is that there's been no conversation between the town board and the village. That's all water under the bridge. Now we move forward. I just want to address a couple of things. I wrote some notes here. The mutual aid system, the way that works, this is by law, this is the way it has to work. If the call goes out and you're on mutual aid, there's three mutual aid calls, five minutes apart. If there's no signed contract between the village and the town, technically, the Village of Rhinebeck Fire Department does not have to respond until that third call, which is fifteen minutes later. Is that our intention? No, we don't want to do that. We want to come to some type of reasonable agreement here. And not just ignore the fact that we have concerns and you have concerns. That's our desire. Okay? Joe, you asked a question about prior contracts, and quite frankly, there's no, there's no clear-cut answer to that question. Okay? When I got on the village board, or was elected mayor in two thousand nine, I started to look at all our operations, and whether it be the fire department, highway department, wastewater department, water department, village hall, you name it, police department, I started to look at all our operations. And I identified at that time that the fire department didn't have a clear accounting of where their responses were. And we, as a village providing service to the town, didn't have an accurate picture of what our cost was. So we began in two thousand and ten tracking the call volumes and where the responses were to. And now, in two thousand and thirteen, we have come up with data that has over forty years determined on average that fifty-two percent of the calls we respond to in the, for Rhinebeck Fire Department are in the town. Do we have an accounting of how many hours those calls are? Whether the truck goes and comes right back? No. Do we have an accounting of whether they're there fighting the fire? No. You can look at the nine-one-one rip-and-run reports and you can identify what the call was for, but we don't have a tracking system for the, the amount of time they're actually on the scene fighting a fire. You have an out time from the station, and you have an in time back into service.
So there is an in and out, so you do have an in and out?
Yes, because that piece of equipment is then going back into service.
That's, that's something, then.
The other districts, you know, we don't have any information about how the other districts operate. All we know is how we operate. Okay? I, I think, my position in this all along, when I talked with Elizabeth, she basically was in agreement with me, I think the town really needs to identify what they're looking for from us and from the other districts. We can't provide anything for Hillside or Ryancliff, of course. We can only provide you what you need from the Village of Rhinebeck. So it's up to you to identify what you need. One other thing, I forgot, the mutual aid thing, you know, this is a, this is a touchy subject, and I understand maybe you have an issue with the fire truck going down to Long Island after Hurricane Sandy. But what I would say is mutual aid is designed so that we all work together to help each other out. And Hillside responds on mutual aid, Ryancliff responds on mutual aid, Rhinebeck does, Red Hook does, Pine Plains does, Myland does. That's a system that's designed to benefit everybody.
Can I just?
Let me, let me just finish one point, okay? And, you know, we could sit down and we could probably find, maybe in the course of the year, I don't know, maybe we'll find twenty calls and they're disputable, but you're helping your neighbors out there, all right? And if we need the service, we expect them to come. So are we wrong to say, we're not going to pay for the mutual aid to another fire district when we expect them to come do it for us?
I don't...
So, I'll just throw that out. We can continue the conversation.
Yeah, I'm going to chirp in and just say, of course, nobody would ever say we don't want to, but if it's just being char, it was being charged only to the Fire Protection District instead of apportioned. It was just an example. And of course, this, you know, it's volunteer fire departments helping whoever needs to help, but...
Correct. And I think if, if we, we take the analysis and you look at what the village charges, what the Hillside District charges, and what the Ryancliff District charges, lump all those ones together, and think about the amount of money we're spending, roughly a half a million dollars, and these are all volunteers, you know, we're getting pretty damn good back for a buck for half a million dollars.
Yes, we are.
So, we need to sit down, we need to talk about this, but clearly, I will say, I think the town really needs to provide us with information they're looking for from us. I mean, we can give you that rip-and-run report box, and you can see where it went, and you can see what time it left and what time it gave back, but I don't really see where that's really going to benefit you a lot. That's all I'll say. The, well, no, I'm closing. We're talking about a temporary agreement here for one eighty, if one three sixty fifth of the one eighty-seven, okay? Sixty, ninety days, you tell us what you think you need in order to get this information resolved, would be to your benefit, probably to resolve it sooner than later. Thank you.
And thank you again for, for coming. I think this has been positive. So, thank you.
Hi, Mayor. Moving on to our presentation, playing liaison reports. IMH, continuation of public hearing for local law number of...
Oh, one thing for liaison, I'm sorry, Tom. The zoning board needs two new members, and so we're going to need to, we're going to fill those spots as soon as possible. If anyone wants to volunteer, it's a great board, and they, it's very important work, so I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Zoning Board Appeals, two members, because I'm not called Town Hall, eight seven six three four, and I don't know. Can we advertise? John, can we advertise? Put out the paper now, come on?
Put it on our website.
Yeah, people need to send in volunteers.
Yeah.
We can do a press release.
Yeah.
If there's some member of the press here that wants to put that in for us, that would be great.
IMH, continuation of the public hearing for local law for two thousand and thirteen to establish an office for single-appointed assessor pursuant to real property tax law three twenty-eight. Elizabeth, I think you want to...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to extend the public hearing into two thousand and fourteen, to February twenty-fourth, to the second meeting of February. I just want to speak as one of the two liaisons to the assessors department, that we have been working with the chair of the department on this issue of, of reconstructing the department, and he's been unable to, due to personal reasons, illness, has been able, unable to work with us. So we fully intended to be in another place, and obviously, we're not. So we've heard what you've said, and we'd like to continue looking at this. We'd like to make a cohesive report and a recommendation to the public, hang the new year with the chair of the department's input. So I don't want to cut anyone off, but it was always our intention to work with the chair, and obviously, he's not able to do that right now. So I think the best thing for us to do would be to pick it up again in the new year when he's doing better, and address everybody's concerns.
So we have the open, or...
I'd like to make a motion to, to continue it to February twenty-fourth, I believe. Is that our correct meeting date? It is.
We have an established one.
Right. Theoretically, if we stick to the same, same set.
Can we speak tonight about...
We, I, we, we have an open motion, and of course, we don't want to not have an, speaking for myself, it wasn't our intention, my intention, not to have anyone speak, it was just to make this motion, so I...
Oh, I second the motion.
Thank you.
So, motion second to continue, you know, is still open, so the second meeting of February twenty-fourteen, or February I?
Hi.
So we'll, however, other comments are still...
Absolutely welcome, but if you wanted to wait till the very end, you, we're just trying to save you from coming back twice. Absolutely, please. No one's...
That's what I want to know. All right. Is the hearing open now?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to point out. Tom, I want you to know what I say now, but not apply to you. You've done a good job, and I'm sorry to see you gone.
I love that, thanks for that, yeah.
I am proud to come before you to argue the case for the three elected assessors. This has been an exercise in sheer stupidity, the town board refusing to divulge the cost savings are major reasons to go to one appointed assessor. The state, in its idiocy, has thrown you a bone, and you were dumb enough to take it. The state has a very short memory, or possibly instant amnesia, on this issue. Not many years ago, in Hyde Park, had a major scandal involving its lone assessor, Basil Rossi. I do not remember all the assorted details, but I believe the bonding company involved with the installation of a complete new water system discovered that the assess valuation was too low to support such an undertaking. The valuations were inflated falsely, which led to an investigation of improprieties by the state, and I think the federal government was also involved. Rossi was facing criminal charges of misconduct and solved the problem for everyone by taking a midnight dive into the Hudson River. The water system was already under construction at the time, was taken over by the county. These are issues which should be made public and not kept under wraps. So the single assessor system is not infallible and far from it. A town board that appoints an assessor that has, has that person under their thumb at all times, and this is very unhealthy, I don't care what the state says about it, when it comes to common sense, they can, they can be a day late and a dollar short. If you truly believe that the single assessor is the greatest thing to come down the pike since sex, then I believe you should return to the first grade, start your formal education over again, because somewhere along the line, you missed the vote. You are dealing with elected officials, and if you are honest and honorable, you would defer this matter to next November's election and let the public decide the issue. Of course, it was never planned to be this way. It's a very quiet, slippery, under-the-table vote, and your scheduling such an important issue during the holidays is proof of that. And make it even easier, why don't you schedule tonight's meeting for Christmas Day? Emory Ruger has been elected assessor for twenty-eight years. To treat him and other assessors like shit in a barnyard is about as low as it gets. When handling a mystery like this, a town board should show especially maturity and class. I see neither here. In all my years of public service, which is presently at forty-one, the village and town boards have worked well together, but in recent years, this has changed, and there is no reason for it except one: politics. Politics is written all over this issue, and it is sad and sick that it should be. And don't give me the crap that times change and older residents don't appreciate these changes. We don't. However, I wouldn't trade my public service experience and common sense with all your college educations combined. This has and will be a colossal embarrassment to Rhinebeck, and is absolutely disgusting. Thank you.
I just want to share a letter that I had received. This is actually sent to me as the mayor from a town resident, Marissa Hagerty, who lives on twenty-eight Ivy Road. And apparently, she had read the press release that I had sent out. Dear Mayor Reardon, it is my understanding that Rhinebeck is considering changing the election of three town assessors to the appointing of one assessor approved by the town board. I read in the Daily Freeman that Councilwoman Gina Fox claimed that Rhinebeck is among the twelve percent of towns in the state who still elect their assessors. For this reason, in addition to the cheaper costs, I can see why the board proposed this change. However, I disagree with this proposition because on the surface, it seems undemocratic. As was said by Supervisor Thomas Traut, this would make the assessors less accessible to the people who elect them and the Rhinebeck community as a whole. There has been little to no information as to why this change is necessary, yet you put it best. It would benefit the community and making the government more efficient, and I have no problem with it. I just wanted to let you know that I agree with you on that. Hopefully, the citizens of Rhinebeck will be more informed soon enough regarding this issue. I trust that as our mayor, you will support whatever decision is best, and if the assessor ends up being a single-appointed official, you will choose the best one. Not that I get to choose the best one. That's up to you, folks.
Thank you.
That's signed by Marissa Hagerty.
Members of the board, it's, thank you for having this hearing. I just want to hand out, I got a letter, this is a, sent to all the certified assessors in New York that are appointed or elected or on the board. And it's basically a continuing education status report. I made some copies. I'd like to leave with you, whoever your assessors may be in the future, whether it's ten years from now, twenty years from now, you'll get a good idea of what courses they have to take to get certified. So you'll have a better understanding of the position. And I'd like to pass these out to you, all members.
Thank you, sir.
If you look at this report, they have a continuing education year, and Councilman Gav did bring up a point about the educational requirements of a board of assessors. You'll look on the, one of the pages in the back, it's optional, after you get certified, everyone takes the same basic courses, whether it's in the classroom, via the computer, or self-study. And then, so we're on the same footing, we're in the same classroom with members, fellow aspiring assessors from all over the state, whether you're up in the Adirondacks, or out in Buffalo, or down in Long Island. After we get certified, if you notice, I, I shared, I came to office, we are on the election lines while, as, we were elected, and in two thousand and eight, unfortunately, ran with Emory Ruger, and we were elected, and four years later, I was re-elected. So each year, you can see credits awarded. The requirement for the appointing assessors is twelve per year. That's twelve hours of classrooms. And the requirement was met by myself and Jack O'Brien, because basically, we're kind of semi-retired, we don't have a full-time business to run like our chairman. Emory Ruger is a very business, very busy guy. I mean, he's in property management, construction, and I've known Emory thirty-five years. He started in the Rhinebeck Country School as a maintenance manager, and he threw hard work, and he's developed a very active business. And he, we're very blessed to have his talent on this board of assessors. He was elected once and re-elected six times, six times. Now, the people had a voice. If we wanted to do him the job, somebody else would run against him, but nobody did. Only, I think he had one contested election in the whole time he was, it was the last, you know, last two years ago. I want to emphasize that because we have a four-year term, but we're not, it's not, you know, a lifetime job. You have to be re-elected. So I was very fortunate, I won by a very slim margin last two years ago, but be it as a man, I take this job very seriously. I'm in good health, and I enjoy these classrooms, I enjoy meeting other assessors, and I wish to continue. Now... Now, uh, this is a guide, and, uh, I must admit, there are pros and cons to both. You can be appointed and get political pressure. You can be on a board of assessors where the three board members don't get along. That can be very dysfunctional, I'll be honest. And I did hear, when I went to school, I heard pro and con on both, but that's one of the reasons why I think the state was pushing for some sole assessor. But, we're blessed to have, uh, for the last twenty years, you have Jack O'Brien, Alex Deimperio, and Emory on the board, and everything got along great, a smoothly running team. And I came on board, I've known these guys for thirty years, we get along very well, we function very well. We had a serious illness in April, Jack O'Brien, uh, had fight cancer, and he's, he's still fighting, he's doing well. But, we had to carry on with two members and a very comparable assessor clerk, but we have a team, and we're all long-term residents of this town, we take it hard, just like all you guys do on the board. This is a very serious business, and it's the type of job, people laugh and say, oh, who wants to be an assessor? You know, is that the most popular job? Just like you guys get a lot of flack on the board. And I must compliment every elected official that's in this town, whether you're the highway superintendent, super advisor, board member, there's a lot of responsibility, and I know you get the phone calls, I was a village trustee for two years, I know, you do get phone calls, and it's a, and we're not paid a king's ransom either, and, and, and you are dedicated, and I compliment you on that. So, I would give you a serious thought to keep it as a status quo. We have a smooth-running town, we have our differences at times, but I think we work things out very well, and, uh, it's a beautiful town, that's why everybody moves here, you know? So, with that, I'm sorry it took us this much time, but I hope it opens up, at least it's informative to you, and it's, uh, we try to stay current, whatever courses are offered that pertain to the town we go to. And I can speak, uh, most of the courses I went to in the last four years, Jack O'Brien came with me. Uh, so, and then we share, when we come back, we share with the chairman, we all get along, we go out to lunch, we talk about subject, and the, the good communication between all three guys. So, thank you very much for your time, sorry it took so long.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I want to go home. I'm Piper Woods, I'm actually a village, uh, property owner, business, um, you know, commercial property, and, uh, I'm also a town resident. So, to be honest, you know, I'm, I'm not really sure, uh, you know, which might be a better way to go. Um, you know, obviously, we've been, I, I have no issue with, uh, the, the way it currently is, um, but I, I find it very interesting that, and this is a little bit, I'm just kind of, this is my first meeting, but I haven't gotten Jim's emails, um, I find it a little interesting that after, you know, you're doing your due diligence with regard to the fire district and the fire department, um, it, it's unclear to me, uh, why you haven't yet, uh, provided the public with the cost difference between, you know, the one person versus the, I don't know, what is it, two or three or four, I'm not quite sure, three people? Um, and I really think that is imperative before you make your decision for those costs to be released to the public. Um, so that's number one. Number two, really, is, uh, are you looking to, uh, with the change to having one person, are you looking to change the objectives of, um, this person's job? Do you have a specific goal in mind, um, that maybe you think the, um, the current assessors aren't doing, um, I don't know, certain tasks to, um, I don't know, to the level that you're looking for? And what, what are those? Um, what are those objectives? Um, and, um, and then, uh, let's see, uh, again, just what would be the cost, I'm interested in knowing what the cost difference would be, um, between the, the one person versus the three people? Um, and, you know, and, uh, you know, and I don't want to beat the course about the cost or whatever, but, I mean, let's face it, like, I, you listen to Obama say, like, oh, there's not going to be any cost difference whatsoever. Well, there was, there was a huge cost difference with Obamacare, you know, all, I mean, myself, you know, my business, you're getting a huge hit, and you know what, as one of the, probably the larger, I'm not going to say the largest property, but one of the bigger properties in the village, I don't want to get hit for some, for an added cost. So I would really like for you guys to choose or go with whichever is going to be the best cost savings. Thank you.
Thank you. You're pro-cost savings? For, for this department?
I'm pro-cost savings, but I'm also, I mean, I mean, there's, there's two sides to the story. There's one, the, um, you know, person's actually cost-
Could you go back?
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's two sides to it. There's one, like, the person's, you know, cost as an employee, so their benefits, um, are you going to be paying them health insurance, are they going to get a pension, I don't know how it works, 401K, I don't know retirement, um, you know, their salary. And then there's also the flip side of, of, you know, is your objective to have the assessors, you know, basically raise the, the current assessments? I mean, what, what is your objectives? So there's sort of two sides to it. You know, there's the cost of the employee, and there could be a cheap, or there could be the, you know, raising of the, do you feel that the assessor is not properly, you know, assessing the properties? You know, and I don't really, I don't know which is worse, you know? Am I better off, you know, paying, you know, some employee more, uh, more money, or am I better off, I, I don't want to get hit with a higher assessor on my property? And I think you will find, I mean, I, I mean, if that is your intent, I think you will, I mean, I, I can't speak to the, you know, the residential properties, but generally speaking with the commercial, I mean, we're based upon, anyway, I'm not going to go, I was going to say, based upon, you know, rent and stuff like that, and which is not as good as it was ten years ago, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, uh, no, go ahead, Ben, go ahead.
To start with, thank you so much for continuing the hearing, uh, through to February. Um, I've spoken to a number of people in the last couple of days, and apparently, this issue is not well-known in the community.
I'm sorry, could you identify her?
Oh, sorry, thank you, this is my friend, so. And I think that people will now have an opportunity to get educated about what this is all about. I did find, uh, the page on the tax dot NY dot gov that talks about this, it's kind of a bit vague, it seemed to me that it was, um, focused on the training issue more than anything else, uh, that if you have an appointed assessor, this person will, uh, by virtue of getting appointed, um, have the, the requirement to do the trainings every year. I think that can be addressed with anybody who's elected. I, I would make one request, that if the, the link to the, the relevant page on tax dot NY dot gov be put on the town's website, so that people can easily access it, and read for themselves, you know, what, what at least the state is putting forward as its case. And finally, just in case I don't get to get to the meeting in February, um, according to the summary of the real property law, relevant sections, um, addressed with the town board, it is at the town board's discretion whether or not to require a referendum on the issue. I would strongly advocate for a referendum. You know, let the people be heard, we're not yet in a hierarchy, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, I don't want to get into answering anybody's questions or comments, okay? Just, I just want to take public hearing comments, and I will continue this in February.
After the meeting, I could spend-
Any further comments to the public?
I could explain a few things. Oh, I'm sorry.
Any further comments?
No, I, I could spend some time.
So, uh, we'll continue this, uh, February, or next week. All right, so, moving on to business items. Item number one, resolution approving abstract twelve B, contracts twelve, uh, V twelve oh nine through V twelve fifty, one for seven, forty-one checks, forty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents, motion is second.
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Item two is a resolution approving the Miller Capital Project for twenty thirteen, abstract three for checks, three checks worth five thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, motion is second.
Motion. Come on, give me a second.
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item four, resolution approving, I'm sorry, item three, resolution approving the budget transfers.
Motion.
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is item four on standby then, uh, for the fire?
We need to set a public hearing for the contracts, for the other two, at least, right, for Hillside and Ryse Club?
I, I would set them for all three, because we do have the contracts for, um, for the village, we can have a public hearing, if the contract changes, uh, we can keep the public hearing open on the, uh, on the Rhine-
Should we set it for a reorg meeting?
Do you want to do that, the reorg meeting? What's the next meeting after that?
The twenty, what if you just-
No, do the reorg meeting.
Which is like the thirteenth, is that the thirteenth, John, if you want?
So, we'll, um-
What is it, Dave?
January thirteenth. Motion is second to, um, set a public hearing for the reorganizational meeting, uh, for January thirteenth, twenty fourteen, motion is second.
I may just ask more of a question.
We have an open motion, I think, make a motion.
I second it. Warren, uh, so what we would do with the village is, assuming that you work something out with the village attorney, that would be the, let's call it the interim contract, that's the one that would be approved.
No, that would be, uh, just a, just a memorandum of understanding that we're continuing the existing contract, but we're raising, um, the price, uh, to-
So what, then I'm confused-
But you would be approving at the public hearing, the actual contract that they, uh, that they sent, but it's unlikely that we will have that ready for that public hearing.
Right, of course.
So, so my, my suggestion would be to just, I'd like, you might want to get some comments from the public on the proposed contract from the village, so I would just have all three, but keep the village open until we, we finalize the contract.
Because I'll get you, we're not going to have-
We're not going to have-
Analyze them.
Right, no.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item five, the resolution appointing the chair of the zoning board appeals, uh, but he's not resigned yet, right?
I think we need to make a motion to hold this over for the reorg. They, I, the zoning board meets after our reorg meeting.
It does, two days after, and it-
But let me, um, say, so you may want to, um, do they have a meeting before that reorg though?
I'm sorry?
Do they have a meeting before?
No, the planning board does, the zoning board does not.
Okay. So, would you, you can hold it over.
Hold it over, but can you amend it to also add, um, Scott Bergen as the-
Yes, I, I put that in the reorg notes, uh, John, will you carry that over? Weston and Bergen as vice chair for-
Does he expire, anybody expire, but before then?
No.
No.
Before the reorg?
Just Dave.
David retired on his-
Right, right, right.
Finishing his term, he's the only one.
Yeah. So hold it over till the January thirteenth meeting?
Thank you.
Item, uh, six, appointing the registrar, deputy registrar, vital statistics.
We need that for January first, sir. Motion.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I make a motion, we do need this person, our-
Because of terms, gotcha.
Yes, it starts business, first business day.
Any discussion?
We have a second?
Yeah. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so move. That's for Sharon, we just did, right?
No, we just did vital statistics, now we're doing, uh-
Your six.
Sharon Sharad, seven-year term.
She needs, uh, motion is second to appoint Sharon Sharad to the board.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, so move. Planning board, reappointment of the chair, and appoint, um, we have actually, um, the chair and the vice chair on the board, Michael Trimble and Melanie Moore, motion is second.
A motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing the bid for the loan care contract.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, from what I understand, is that the contract will be, in effect, just the bid documents signed by the, uh, most capable bidder? There's no other contract?
No.
Is there, right?
No, it's, it services April to October, it's the properties and the schedule.
I'm just wondering if we ought to add something, giving us a right to terminate the, uh, the reigning period, uh, of the contract, say on thirty days' notice, or whatever we-
We can put that into the bid.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can do that, just again.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so move. Resolution number ten, resolution approving the police contract. Motion is second.
Motion.
Second.
Police contract?
Yeah, that's fine.
All in favor-
Unless you have any problem, if you have no problem with it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item Ledland is a resolution approving the cemetery notice, motion is second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Was there any-
Do you want to speak about, yeah?
And they are, the cemetery committee is working on, um, changing some of the rules and regulations, that won't necessarily be posted on the signs, but is given to every plot owner. Those will incorporate some changes, and so the public needs to be more aware of those as they come out of their meeting in, uh, in January fifteenth.
Can you speak to what the cemetery committee is trying to achieve here, are they trying to achieve a different look, or?
No, not different look, people have started planting small trees, which can be mowed around, and they can approach on other plots that aren't within their structure, so we just wanted to make that more clear, that you cannot plant shrubs and trees, and that's it, that's all.
So these, that's what will be removed?
Right. They can still plant flowers within their prescribed owned area.
So we're asking people to do it voluntarily, after the fifteenth of April, the caretaker will remove these.
That's right.
Thank you. Encumbering, um, leftover money?
Nothing shall I mention to you?
No, but there was leftover money for the web, uh, committee that we are going to use before, uh, middle of January, when the bills come out, to do some changes on the website. I didn't have any other discussion, did you?
Typically, there's something left over that we-
In the, in the cemetery-
You'll go back to the, figure the fund it came from.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things, like the freezer that we authorized for the concession stand, we borrowed one for the summer, but that's still authorized, we're going to need to buy it, that should be encumbered.
But we have-
It's anything in the resolutions that hasn't been accounted for.
Do, do we have to spend it by a certain time, by mid-January, when the vouchers are signed?
It's whatever, we allocated the money, and we should close it by the end of, when the book's closing this year.
Right, February, close at the end of February, we decide, that's when we close.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, I mean, I've gone to my committee and board, you know, and looked at what we haven't spent, and have basically written out a purchase order and committed the money to specific projects if needed. If not, I would assume it would go back into, um, funds balance, you know, if, I don't know that we can earmark it if we don't have a specific project, but as with the freezer-
That's very specific.
The freezer?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. You should do it.
So you can do that by, uh, February. Okay, so that's all, there's no discussion items, so motion is second to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.